Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Finance and HR Committees of the Lake Bluff Public Library Trustees. This is a combined meeting of these two committees. I call this meeting to order at 7:06 PM. Do I have a volunteer to take minutes in lieu of Janie Trustee Church not attending?
I can take notes.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, perfect. I am going to take roll call first of the Finance Committee. Trustee Zaudi.
Here.
Trustee Shaw.
Here.
And Trustee Shaw is attending tonight in place of Trustee Meyerhoff as a voting member of this committee. And so with that, we do have a quorum of the Finance Committee. Thank you both.
Can I ask you, how do I note that in the notes? Do I, do I need to put that somewhere?
Um, I'd be happy to help with the notes after too, but basically just their initials and yes, I can help with that.
Okay. Just because I didn't know how Kathy's noted it. Okay, perfect.
Yes. Oh, thanks. Good question. So now I'm going to take roll call of the HR Committee. Trustee Graziano.
Here.
And Trustee Shaw.
Here.
With that, we do have a quorum. Thank you so much. Do we have any additions or changes or edits to the agenda before we move on to the review of the minutes? Okay, hearing none. Moving on to the review and approval of the Finance Committee Meeting Minutes from March 7, 2023. Thank you, Trustee Zaudi, for taking those minutes. I'm going to share them on screen. I did attach them to the meeting invite for everybody as well. So this would be for review of the Finance Committee members who are on the call tonight. So with that, I'm going to just scroll down briefly for your review. Any additions, edits, changes to the minutes of this Finance Committee Meeting Minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the Finance Committee Meeting Minutes from March 7, 2023?
I still have.
I can hear Bonnie by a smidge, yes. So Bonnie is the motion, and then for Jenny, the second is Trustee Zaudi, Matt. And so all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed. All right, the meeting, the meeting minutes from the Finance Committee Meeting from March 7 have been approved. Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to now bring up the meeting minutes from the HR Committee, the Human Resources Committee. This is from the February 10th meeting. And so those minutes are now on screen. I'll scroll through. Do I have any edits or suggested changes for these meeting minutes? And thank you to Trustee Graziano for creating these minutes.
Oh, Janie, right?
Oh, it was Janie, excuse me. Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Committee Meeting Minutes from February 10, 2023?
I still move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed. All right, the HR Committee Meeting Minutes from February 10 are approved. Thank you all very much. Okay, and with that, we move on to the next item of our agenda. And officially, that is the presentation of the Staff Recognition Proposal from the Library Director with follow-up discussion. And so in order to start this presentation tonight, what I'd like to do is a brief budget review so that you all can see where we are financially in this year's fiscal year. As this proposal is to expend money from this budget year, I'd like to share with you where we are financially at this time. So give me a moment while I acclimate. Okay, so this report was run today and confirmed by multiple sources. It is correct. And what you're seeing in front of you are all of the revenue and expenditures. As the, as I scroll down, you'll see the expenditures through today. Today is April 6, the end of the fiscal year is April 30. We do have several more weeks of the budget year with at least one full pay period to support in the budget. And so I wanted to give you an overview of some of the expenses that we will expect before the year is out. And my recommendation with the proposal and to show you that we do have ample funds to support this proposal. As you can see just right here off the top, we have received 100% of our property tax dispersment by now, so I will discuss that at the April meeting. With regards to passport fees, as of yesterday, I received word from Martha that we have hit $30,000 of revenue received in passports this year. That's not reflected in this report because there are some financial that we have to do to input that revenue. But we are really proud of that number. And so you will see at the April Board Meeting, this number is even higher because this column is the year-to-date. Everything else is pretty standard. And then really what I want to focus on here is the expenditures for the librarian and the staff salary lines. Looking at last year's budget and last year's April expenditures, that's what this column is for, activity for 2022. By the end of April, the library had expended close to $50,000 for staff salaries, both librarian and staff level for that month. So I am estimating a little bit more than 50,000, knowing that there's probably going to be, it's not going to be that much because this is with Eric, our former director, on the salary. So given the amount that I'm going to showcase to you in a moment, I am planning for this amount to be expended before the end of this fiscal year. But as you can see, when it comes to the actual line overall, we are approximately 87% spent. At this time last year, we were, we had spent, we had spent more money than we had at this point this year. So there is ample money in the salary line for this proposal. I also want to highlight that we are about $10,000 underspent, actually we're more than that. $10,000 underspent for IMRF contributions for this year compared to last year. So that is a considerable savings, again, for the reasons we've discussed in previous meetings. I'm also going to say, well, there are some expenses that are going to come through this budget, budget month at the Board Meeting. New light fixtures, the final payment of the furniture, our new book drop, which was delivered recently and will be installed tomorrow. All of these will be expended in this budget year. I am not anticipating that we will be overspent at all. In fact, I'm anticipating that our amount that we're able to transfer to the reserves is going to be at least $20,000. So that's 4,000 more than we budgeted based on this number down here. So this column again is the year-to-date balance of 2023. This is how much money we have left to expend before the end of the fiscal year. This is how much money we had left to expend before the fiscal year at this same time in April of last year. We are behind in spending for a lot of reasons. I mentioned a couple of things already with regards to collections because of the six-month without a director and the impact that has had on staff. A lot of the collection work hasn't been done. So you can see last year, we spent much more than we have spent at this same time last year in our collections alone. We have also received revenue more than we did last year with passports. So all of that coming together, I'm estimating, like I said, about 50,000 left for salaries to be expended in April of 2023. We do have some pretty pricey ticket items to pay for, but that in no way, shape, or form is going to break the bank, as it were, for us to be able to support this proposal. And I'm actually quite confident that the number to reserves, because this has been such an odd year financially for the library, it could probably be much higher than 20,000. But I won't know that until at least a couple more weeks when I, at the Board Meeting. So there'll be more information to share with you then.
I don't think our revenues are higher than they were at this point last year. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So this would be the revenue line. Did I say revenues? I did mean expenditures. I apologize. Thank you for correcting me, Matt. So it's the expenditures that were higher last year than were this year. So just looking at this overall total, this is how much money we were, we had left to spend at this time last year. This is how much money we have left to spend this year, which, which is a lot, which is a lot. And that's not anything that you will see from me going forward. I think that that is just an impact of staff's inability to be able to prioritize a lot of the building work. As we've discussed, a lot of the collection work. But there will be unexpected costs that will come out of this number before the end of April is over. As I mentioned, the, the furniture, final payment, we have a contract for one of our computer licensings that we, we can pay this year, and then the book drop also, and the water heater, and the water heater, which was installed last week. Any questions from, about the financial situation of the library as it stands right now, the state of the budget?
No questions for me.
Okay. So with that, you've received my proposal. I know that in other, every library does a little bit different. Technically, from a financial standpoint, something in this nature wouldn't necessarily need to elevate to a proposal and then be voted on by the Board. However, I don't, I don't think I want to operate that way. I very much value transparency. And with regards to such a high price, a high, a high price tag of the proposal, I wanted to make space for discussion of the Board because this has not been done before. But since there are 17 staff, each individual amount doesn't exceed the director's allowance. That's what I, technically, it doesn't have to go to committee. However, I think it's really important that it does, especially since I'm new and since we want to be as transparent to the community as possible. So I really appreciate you while making time for tonight. My proposal was brief, but at the same time, I think really highlights the various benefits and reasons for staff recognition this particular year. This particular year for the Lake Bluff Public Library staff is unique more than any other year, I think, in recent history for many reasons. And I think based on the work that I've seen in the last now four months as director and the work that I've heard staff have done through you all as trustees and through the community, I think that the employees of Lake Bluff Public Library are deserving of this type of financial recognition. I do think that this is just one part of a total reward system that I'm really looking forward to working on and improving for the staff at the library and not just financial experiences and financial rewards also. There are other avenues I'm excited to work with the Human Resource Committee on to help recognize and incentivize and motivate staff that aren't necessarily extrinsic in this case as this is. I do think that there are very many valid reasons for the, the amount of money that hasn't been spent this particular financial year. I don't think that this is anything any of us want to see happen again. If you, if we have money in our budget allotted for particular items, we need to do the community a service and expend that budget on those priorities. But I do think an absence of the library director for as long as six, seven months, plus the training of a new director, it certainly has contributed to a lot of inability for staff to be able to move forward, elements of work that may have been able to be prioritized if there was a director here. And so the proposal you have before you has four tiers based on job class. And I say job class, but I will admit that since we do not have any job descriptions, well, that's not true. We now have four job descriptions for our four managers, I'm very happy to report. But we do not have any other job descriptions for the other staff levels. And that is a goal and priority for the managers in their new fiscal year as they just participated and we just finished their performance reviews. Just a couple of weeks ago, the managers did, so that is a goal for them in the next year. It was a little bit difficult to delineate as I kept asking questions, what type of work do staff do? Why are they this position? Why do they have this name? A good example is our shelvers. So our shelvers are a particular level of class that has a minimum wage start pay at $15. And that's appropriate if the job was just shelving. However, our staff were small library, everybody is cross-trained. Our shelvers also work the desk. And that opens up a whole new level of responsibility and work that they do beyond just shelving. And shelving is very important. I don't mean just shelving. But so their job description, if it were to have said shelving, that isn't even truly a reflection of their work that they do at the library because it's more expansive than that level. And I found that to be the case for a lot of the other staff. So I'm looking forward to having these job descriptions next year. The benchmarking, salary benchmarking project will be able to move forward next year. And so as I've identified these four tiers, these are the tiers that I feel are closest to what the outcome will be when we do have all of our job descriptions at the library in, in the ways that I've observed, the areas of responsibilities to be. You've seen some questions that Bill sent forth already in advance. I included all of you on my answers, one that I just wanted to talk about briefly. Again, in addition to me sending the answers was, what is the future of this type of financial reward system for the library? And I do think that this year is a very unique year, and I don't intend on, I don't see the need for a staff-wide financial reward program in future years. However, I do think that there will be salary adjustments that will impact take-home salary for staff, but not necessarily related to incentive, this incentivizing program such as this. I do think that in general, I gave an example of how a director sometimes provides a one-time honorarium for a short amount of exceptional work or additional responsibilities taken on. And something like that is, is pretty, it can be rare, but it is a practice among libraries that I've been a part of, and I've been the recipient of such rewards in that way. And at this time, I just want to share a final word of support. I am very confident in the staff's ability and they're, they're deserving of this recognition. I think because this year is so unique, I wanted to advocate for their effort and their impact in the community in a unique way. And so you have my proposal to discuss. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Renee, I, I have a follow-up to a question Bill asked.
Yes.
The question is in regard to prorating bonuses for individuals who work a fraction of a full-time week. So let's say in the associates bucket, there's 11 different people. Do they all work on average the same number of hours per week? Or if you have someone who's at 80% of a full-time, of a 40-hour work week, let's say, and someone else who's 40% of a 40-hour work week, in most cases, those, and any, any bonus payment would be prorated.
Yeah, good question. So the two amount of times that are two, two levels of associate in terms of hours per week that we have, they're not really levels or salary ranges, it's just number of hours per week. It's 18 hours and 24 hours. And we do not, so the ones who work 18 hours or less, it's on average every year, we pay them 18 hours per week. That is how they are scheduled. And then the staff members that receive, or excuse me, that work more than 24 hours a week, it's not more than 24 hours, but it's on average. There are two requirements that we're kind of working through. We do have to pay benefits at, for any salary, salaried member over 30 hours a week. And so libraries typically keep their part-timers around 24, 25 hours a week to avoid those costs if that's the role of the job. And then the 18-hour, hours a week, that is very close to the 20-hours requirement for IMRF. So for those staff that are more than 18 hours but less than 30, they are eligible for some paid time off and IMRF benefits, which we contribute to. But for those staff that work 18 hours, on average, they don't receive any benefits. Now, the starting salary is very complicated because it's not consistent. There are some, oh, yeah.
I'd say that's okay. I think what Bill's question seemed to be getting at to me and what my question is, would, I would think you, individuals who are on average 18 hours or less would be in one category for bonus payout. And those who are on average above 18 or, you know, 18 to 24 would have a different category of payout. And it would be.
And the reason I didn't do that is because the areas of responsibility are not distinct. There are staff that are 18 hours or less that act as person in charge on Sundays. That is a level of responsibility that is more significant than some people that work 24 hours. As I was told in the past, the distinction between job classes was hours. But as I look at the distinction between job classes, I look at job responsibilities. And I'm comparing all of the different staff in that 11, I think it's 11 in that category, and their level of work and the responsibility that they have at the library and the educational requirements and the minimum qualifications for those jobs, which are all the same, and they're comparable. So that is why I lumped them all together. Because in the end, after our job description work is done, my goal is to have them all be the same job description because their responsibilities are all the same level. Does that make sense as to why I did that?
Yeah, I, I understand your rationale. I can tell you that in my experience, compensation, vacation time, bonus payouts is all prorated. If someone's working an 80-hour work week, you know, they might be, might be eligible for $1,000. But if they're working in eight, at 80%, 80-hour work week, then they would be eligible for $800. If someone is on, you know, a 20-hour work week, they would be eligible for a $500 payout. So that's, you know, that's my paradigm, if you will.
Yeah.
I'd be curious, ask Matt and Jenny what their thoughts are on that.
I'm very open to the discussion too. I want to add one more thing. One of the benefits of a part-timer who works 18 hours or less is their weekend availability. And it's really tricky to start comparing responsibilities when there is value to keeping the library open seven days a week for most of the year. When the people that work less hours, they might be more flexible in being able to come into the library when someone is sick. They might be able to work a weekend when someone is unavailable. So I definitely hear what you're saying and very open to giving the floor to Matt and Jenny at this time. But thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the insight there and that, that coincides with my experience as well in terms of proration. I just wonder, at the end of the day, are we talking about meaningful dollar differences once we apply the proration? I mean, given the award amounts? Good for thought.
Yeah, I mean, from my experience in working in nonprofits, it, I feel like there was always more, it wasn't as delineated. So there was more of, so I, in my experience, there, I guess you can't really compare, but it wasn't as obvious hours to responsibility and stuff like that. So I can see where Renee is coming from. And I think that it would be important to recognize the level of responsibility in addition to that, just, more than just the hours, I guess is what I'm saying. So I would think putting them all in one category, I think would be, I would support that.
Okay, works, works for me. Thanks for sharing your perspectives, Matt, Jenny. And Renee, for like, you know, the additional background regarding person in charge, weekend hours, et cetera.
Yeah. And, and I really appreciate you bringing that up because in my thought, when I started this research, I was just going to go straight to the job descriptions. And then when I realized that, so for example, there's one person in one category on their own. This person's job description is technically an associate level, but their job and their work is nothing at all like an associate-level position. And the expectations that have been put upon this person have been frankly managerial level. So given the fact we don't have those job descriptions, it's a little bit more difficult for me to share. But I hope that has given a little bit more information. Really appreciate the discussion.
Um, I'd like to, go ahead, Jenny.
Oh, and I was, I'm thinking about the, the work that I've seen from your staff. I do see a variety as opposed to, even though someone maybe is not working, is not full-time or they're, you know, even less than part-time, they're still, I've seen some of them doing so much more than that. So I can see where you're coming from.
Is this a good time to move to executive session?
Yeah, that's just what I was about to suggest.
Okay, do I have a motion to end the public meeting and begin executive session?
Also move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed? All right, so we will end our public meeting at 7:35 and move into executive session at this time. Welcome back to the second part of tonight's meeting, a combined meeting of the Finance and Human Resources Committees of the Lake Bluff Public Library Trustees. After we've met in executive session, we are moving back into the public meeting. And so at this time, following the agenda and following our discussion of the proposal, what I'd like to do is open for a motion from one of the trustees on this call.
I'll motion to approve the staff recognition pro, bonuses as, as. I'll motion to approve the staff recognition pro- bonuses as as mentioned.
Including the changes that were discussed in executive session. Thank you very much, Matt.
All second.
Okay. What I'd like to do is a roll call vote, since this is a significant amount of financial dollars for the library, I'm going to call out your name and move through the roll call. Trustees Audi.
Hi.
Trustee Shaw.
Hi.
Trustee Graziano.
Bye.
And with that, the proposal has been approved by members of both the Finance and Human Resources Committees of the Lake Bluff Public Library Trustees. Thank you all so very much. And on behalf of the staff, I want to say thank you for this generous support of their work. They are truly, truly deserving of this. I have a few.
Will you, when will you communicate this to the staff?
The communication plan is to do an all-staff email and blog post tomorrow morning. And then each individual staff member will receive a letter from me with their amount that has been assigned to them related to the bonus. And then I send an email, I send a message to Bettina at the Village and with the amount for each staff member, each employee. And she incorporates that into their payroll. So transparency-wise and you know, to support privacy of employees, just like we don't see their payroll checks in our monthly expenditures, it will be included in their next payroll check that they receive.
I I, I would encourage you, if it's possible to do a staff meeting tomorrow, to do it because it'll create, it it should create a really good vibe in a library for at least the day.
I will do my best. We've got our maintenance people tomorrow in the morning, doing a lot of installation and but at the very least, I can gather staff from the nine to ten AM hour and make that announcement. Thank you, Bonnie, for that. And I will also follow up with an email to the trustees. If not tonight, then tomorrow morning to let all trustees know the recordings of these meetings will be posted on YouTube as well. And yes, and so I, and I had also received emails from individual trustees of their support of this proposal. So I just want to acknowledge them. Those trustees at this time. So thank you all. With that, what I'd like to share are just a few quick, very quick, brief updates. As we move into next fiscal year, I just want to highlight some work that I see as priority for both the Finance and the HR Committees as it relates to some of this work. The first item that I wanted to put on all of your radars is staffing needs. We are in need of more flexibility and more coverage to staff our service desks. You all have approved to the budget for the next fiscal year with the salary increases that we outlined. And there is ample flexibility there to add another position less than eighteen hours to help share responsibility and give us more flexibility for, especially for weekend coverage for our service desks. So that is going to be a priority of mine in the new fiscal year. As I mentioned, our four managers now have job descriptions that they are actually quite excited about, I am too, that will inform the scope and the prioritization of their work next year. Now that they have been through a process of me creating their job description, they will be using their job description as a template to create job descriptions for their staff. And so some managers will work together to create a job description for people that share two departments, the children's department and the reference. We have some shared staff responsibilities there. But the goal is to have those job descriptions created by the end of the second quarter of the new fiscal year so that we can move forward to the next priority that I've identified, which is the salary benchmarking project. Creating the job descriptions has to happen first in order for us as a institution, as an organization, to have our staff jobs and salaries compared with other libraries. And so HR Source is the group that I'd like to be working with. I'll be working with them on creating a proposal for us of the benchmarking project. I attended a training recently about benchmarking on this exact thing. So I'm really confident and hopeful that this project will be really great for us in terms of paying, paying the jobs what they are worth in the industry and helping support retention of staff so that we are more competitive with the profession.
Renee, can I ask you something?
Yes.
Okay, just about job descriptions. I know I've seen job descriptions that Eric had. Are they, were they just outdated, the ones that he was using or?
They're not job descriptions in the sense that I'm familiar with and other libraries are familiar with job descriptions. So there are things that are not indicated in that. Those are job postings where there are overviews of what the job does. A job description ideally identifies areas of work and responsibilities and sometimes even percentages of that that position's work, what areas of work are priority and the other piece of information that's not, that hasn't been included before that I've had to uncover the exempt status of each individual job, what class, I've had to create a class system for our library for the different positions, job titles. There are jobs here at our library that are distinct from other jobs, but everybody has the same title. And so in thinking about legacy planning and thinking about how would I look at this work? How do we define this work? That there isn't any guiding document for the staff or for their manager to really help scope that. So we have pieces, I'll say, in the, in the job postings that we have, but nothing that resembles an official job description as I'm familiar with working with.
Is there any way, will the HR committee be able to see any of the work that you're doing?
Sure, absolutely. Happy to share, even at our next meeting. I could share with them, the four of them that I created for tomorrow. Typically, job descriptions are approved by the director level. They don't need to go to committee. But yeah, I would be very happy to share any of that with you.
Oh, yeah. And I don't, we didn't, I didn't mean for approval or anything. I'm just curious to see how, what they look like. And how they're different from what we've seen before. I'm just, I just for that, because I feel like it gives us a better idea of what is happening in the library. We just have a better understanding.
I think that's a great idea and especially when all of them are done, you know, sharing them with the whole board especially. It provides an overview of the work that is done at the organization. Bonnie, go ahead.
I I also Jenny, the HR committee needs to write a job description for the library director, right? So we had a job posting that we created, but we need to create a job description.
Okay.
As well.
And I think Jenny, since I'm creating that evaluation and sharing with you my draft tomorrow, a lot of it is overlapping because I mean, you review, you evaluate a director based on the scope of their job and the scope of their job is identified in a job description. So those categories I talked through with you about governance, personnel, programming policy, some of those overarching categories. Would also for the HR committee help designate a job description for my position.
Yes, that's great. That's great. Because I think, yeah, I just love, would love to see the work you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. Lot of it. Thank you both. Any other business or discussion points at this time before we adjourn? Okay, well, I just want to say again, on behalf of all of us at the library, thank you all for your support of this proposal. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
All second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh nine PM. Thank you all very much and have a great evening.
I know.
Thanks everyone. Bye-bye.
Thank you so much. Bye-bye.